City Council Meeting will come to order, please stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
Can you remain standing, we're gonna have a moment of silence for the late Katie Hall, the preacher who also passed, and Ms. Georgia Hannan, one of my constituents who passed this past week. Heavenly Father, we come before you just saying thank you, Lord, for another day. We ask that you guide us and direct us so that we can do what's necessary to make our city a greater place for all the residents of this great city. We ask for your blessings for each and every individual that's assembled here. We ask for all these blessings in your son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Number two, roll call.
Markovich.
Here.
Spitali.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Salinas.
Here.
Higgs.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Henosa.
Here.
Opinker.
Here.
Number three, reading of the minutes. Chairman. Councilman Markovich. Take a motion, we approve the minutes. It's been a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
First by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Spitali to approve the minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And it passes. Number four, approval of claims. Mr. Chairman. Councilman Markovich.
Move for approval of claims dated February 8th through February 22nd for council meeting February 27th, beginning with claims dated February 16th and ending with claims dated February 22nd, claims number 1049 through claims number 1266, for a total of $3,476,644.39. I so move.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor on the approval of claims, first by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs. Any discussion? Any discussion on the claims? Any discussion on the claims? Roll call vote, Clerk Golick.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Motion passes nine to nothing. It's time to start a public hearing, we have four of them tonight. First one's 12-7.
Item A, ordinance dash 12-07 sponsored by Councilman Higgs, and ordinance to appropriate funds within the Hammond Police Department. Item B, ordinance 12-08 sponsored by Councilman Higgs, and ordinance to appropriate funds within the Hammond Police Department. Item C, ordinance 12-09 sponsored by Councilman Higgs, and ordinance to appropriate funds within the Hammond Police Department. Item D, ordinance 12-10 sponsored by Councilman Higgs, and ordinance to appropriate funds within the Hammond Police Department.
Would anybody like to speak? Anybody like to speak on?
Mr. President, you probably want to say the public hearing is now open.
Did open it, Councilman Higgs. No one willing to speak, public hearing is now closed. Number six, communications. Are there any communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
See the correspondence from the, it's a fundraiser to benefit for Eugene Prozar. Please come eat and shop and support. Eugene was diagnosed with liver cancer and currently undergoing radiation treatment. He's unable to work with no health insurance and bills piling up. We are asking you for your help in his time of need. Lifelong resident of Hammond, please attend his spaghetti dinner and bake sale to help Prozar family during their difficult time. Lansing Country Club, 18600, Wentworth Avenue, Lansing, Indiana, Sunday, March 18th, 2012, from 1:00 to 5:00. Adults $10, children $7, 10 years and under. Tickets are available at the door. For donation information, call Paula at (219) 923-7011. Or send donations to P.O. Box 2153, Hammond, Indiana, 46323.
Any other communication? Any other communications? Communications are now closed. Number seven, committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Council as a whole will be bringing out 12-11, 12-12, and 12-13.
Any other committee reports?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Also, Council as a whole will be bringing out 12-07, 12-08, 12-09, and 12-10.
Any other committee reports? Committee report is not closed. Number eight, ordinance, third and final reading.
Ordinance 12-07 sponsored by Councilman Higgs, and ordinance to appropriate funds within the Hammond Police Department.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I move for final passage of 12-07, I so move.
Second.
It's been first by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Spitali, final passage of 12-7, any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call vote, Clerk Golick.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Motion passes nine to zero.
Ordinance 12-08 sponsored by Councilman Higgs, and ordinance to appropriate funds within the Hammond Police Department.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I move for final passage of 12-10, I so move.
Second.
We got a first by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Spitali, passage, any discussion?
What's the, is that the correct number, is this 12-08, it should be 12-08, right? Are we going in order?
Yes, 12-08.
12-08, for correction, and that's for police continuing education.
Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes, motion passes nine to zero.
Ordinance 12-09 sponsored by Councilman Higgs, and ordinance to appropriate funds within the Hammond Police Department.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I move for final passage of 12-09, I so move.
Second.
It's been first by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Spitali, is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
This particular ordinance is for the Hammond Police Department to appropriate for the vehicle release fund.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Ordinance 12-10 sponsored by Councilman Higgs, and ordinance to appropriate funds within the Hammond Police Department.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I move for final passage of 12-10, I so move.
Second.
It's been first by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Spitali, is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
This is for a fingerprint fund for the Hammond Police Department, $1,500 being appropriated.
Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Ordinance 12-11 sponsored by Councilwoman Vines, and ordinance amending ordinance number 4109, also known as Section 91.052 of the Hammond Municipal Code pertaining to animal license fees.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of 12-11.
Second.
It's been first by Councilwoman Vines, second by Councilman Kalwinski, is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Think this is gonna increase the fees from $3 to $5?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
That is correct, in addition to a provision for a $10 fee for those animals that are not neutered or spayed.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
So the $10 will be applied if they adopt the animal and it's not spayed or neutered?
Uh, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, generally when an animal is adopted, they, uh, the new owner is required to have the animal neutered or spayed. So that would be taken care of.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion?
Oh, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Um, there is one correction in this ordinance, um, on the second whereas, I would like to amend this by taking out after 1976 years.
Second.
It's been first by Councilwoman Vines, second by Councilman Henosa to amend.
Ouch.
Amend out 12-11.
No, years.
Amend out years.
After 1976, the word years, because it hasn't been 1,976 years since we had a change.
Amend out the years. Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
Councilwoman, uh, what was the money generated off of this?
Um, I believe it was about $14,000.
Any other discussion?
I'll for the vote. On the amendment.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Any other discussion on the amendment? Clerk Golick, roll call vote on the amendment.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes, the amendment passes nine to zero. Now on the ordinance, is there any other discussion on the ordinance with the amendment? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Motion passes nine to zero.
Ordinance 12-12 sponsored by Councilwoman Vines, and ordinance amending ordinance number 4109, also known as Section 91.050 of the Hammond Municipal Code pertaining to animal licenses.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Move for final passage of 12-12.
Second.
It's been first by Councilwoman Vines, second by Councilman Henosa, is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, this ordinance is, is basically changing the form that the veteran, uh, veterinarian is supplied for, uh, providing information about the rabies shot. It will also have a line that will indicate whether or not the animal has been spayed or neutered.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes, motion passes nine to zero.
Ordinance 12-13 sponsored by Councilwoman Vines, and ordinance to create a new section of Section 118 of the Hammond Municipal Code as it pertains to cash-for-gold businesses, scrap dealers, and pawnbrokers located in the city of Hammond.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of 12-12, uh, 12-13, I'm sorry.
Second.
It's been first by Councilwoman Vines, second by Councilman Henosa, is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
This ordinance would require, um, cash-for-gold businesses, scrap dealers, and pawnbrokers in the city of Hammond to pay their customers by check. Uh, this would give the Hammond Police Department a paper trail to follow for some of the items that are turned in. Uh, for instance, I have from a scrap dealer here in town, a receipt, the name Two Brothers, could be anybody. If it was your, um, valuable items that may have been stolen as the result of a break-in in your home, uh, I'm sure you would like, uh, a better paper trail than Two Brothers. I have Two Brothers, so, um, that's it.
Any other discussion?
Could I address the council, is that allowed?
No.
Not at this time.
Ma'am, under public expression, you can. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes, motion passes nine to zero.
President Opinker, that concludes the ordinances for final passage.
Number nine, introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance number 12-14 sponsored by Councilman Kalwinski, and ordinance to appropriate funds in the Hotel Motel Innkeeper's Tax Fund for the Hammond Park Department.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kalwinski.
I move that 12-14 pass through first and second reading and be referred to council as a whole with a public hearing date scheduled for March 26, 2012.
Second.
It's been first by Councilman Kalwinski, second by Councilman Spitali, is there any discussion? Any discussion?
Excuse me, Mr. President, that was council as a whole on what date?
March 26. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Item B, ordinance 12-15 sponsored by Councilwoman Vines and Councilman Spitali, and ordinance amending ordinance 7685, 828564, 8630, 8645, 8718, 8754, 8755, 8854, 8930, 9017, and 9061, otherwise known as Section 36.005 of the Hammond Municipal Code as it pertains to the Hammond Jobs Program.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for first and second reading and refer to council as a whole on March 12.
Second.
First by Councilwoman Vines, second by Councilman Spitali, is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Um, uh, each of us were given a list of projects that are federally funded projects throughout the city that require a local match, and, um, that's what this ordinance is.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
On this, uh, list, could somebody please tell me what district each one of these projects are in?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I'd like to ask Chief of Staff Tom McGaverson to come to the podium, please.
Mr. President, members of council, um, the list before you, the Kennedy Avenue project is in the 6th District, Columbia from Michigan to 312 is in the 2nd District, Indianapolis Boulevard 169th to 165th is in the 5th District, um, 169th Street, that would be in the 4th District, Chicago Avenue would be in the 2nd District, uh, the Nipco Bike Trail, um, you see it in three different sections, so I'm going to point out all three, three of those end up in the 1st and 2nd Districts. Uh, the Wolf Lake Trail is the 1st District, um, the Phase, uh, Phase 1 Flood Study is in the, um, 4th District, uh, Hump Road is in the 3rd District, uh, the ADA Transition Plan, that is, that is in follow-up to the, uh, resolution that you had to pass last fall, um, for the city to continue to receive federal highway funds, um, you now have to do a transition plan as well, so this is encompassing all 6 districts. Uh, City Hall, pointing is in the 3rd, the Monon Trail is in the 3rd and the 4th, it's basically kind of split between the 2 districts. Uh, the Trail Bridge, Monon Trail Bridge is in the 4th District, and the 3 bike bridges, I believe, uh, all 3 of them would be in the 3rd District. Uh, Councilman, Councilman Higgs, um, Calumet and Conkey is 3rd District, correct? And, uh, of course, Maywood School is 3rd District, and Columbia Avenue at, um, Southeastern, is that in your district? I believe it is, yes. So those are all 3rd Districts.
Southeastern, Columbia Avenue in what?
Columbia in Southeastern.
No.
Is that, that's...
That would probably be, um, 5th.
Actually between the 4th and 5th.
Okay, okay, so 2 of the 3, and the last one being the 4th.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Item C, ordinance 12-16 sponsored by Councilman Opinker, and ordinance designating 170th Street as a one-way street eastbound from a Cook to Marshall, and refilling any ordinance in conflict.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I move 12-16 on first and second reading by title and refer to council as a whole in Streets and Alley Committee, I so move.
Second.
It's been first by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Henosa, is there any discussion? Basically what happened with this, um, ordinance, I was approached by, um, several crossing guards from Morton Elementary, and also some people that live in the area, with the traffic around school time, and by making this a one-way, alleviate all that congestion there, and, uh, that's where we're at with that. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This will go on Streets and Alley, passes.
President Opinker, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Number 10, resolutions.
Item A, or, uh, Resolution 12R-06 sponsored by Councilman Spitali, a resolution appointing Michael Opinker to the Lake County Solid Waste Management District.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
I can make final passage for 12R-06.
Second.
First by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Kalwinski, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes.
Resolution passes nine to zero.
President Opinker, that concludes the reading of the resolutions.
Actually, there's one more there, Clerk Golick, 12-7, I don't know if you got a copy of it?
Got to suspend the rules for them.
Mr. President.
Going to...
Councilman Henosa.
Uh, motion to suspend the rules to, uh, pass a Resolution 12R-7.
There's a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
First by Councilman Henosa, second by Councilman Higgs. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call vote to suspend the rules.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski. Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Motion passes 8-0, one absent.
Resolution 12R-07 sponsored by Councilman Higgs, a resolution to honor the late Katie Hall.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I move that we pass Resolution 12R-07, I so move.
Second.
It's first by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Spitali, is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Henosa.
Uh, if the clerk can add me as a sponsor, Katie Hall was my, uh, history teacher in the late 70s.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
If I can have the clerk...
If I can have the clerk read that in its entirety. I think he's waiting on you.
Have the clerk read it.
Clerk Golick.
Whereas the common council of the city of Hammond notes with regret the passing of the late Katie Hall, and whereas the common council finds that she was an extraordinary citizen of this area and greatly contributed in her long career of public service to well-being of our community and our country. The council, in particular, recognizes her service as a United States Congresswoman in establishing Martha Luther King Day as a national holiday. Her demise is a great loss to the city of Hammond. Therefore, be resolved by the common council of the city of Hammond that the common council, on behalf of its citizens, the city of Hammond, extends its condolences to the family of the late Katie Hall and recognizes and honors her for many contributions to our community.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Call for the vote. Clerk Golick, roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski. Zalinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Enosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes.
Resolution passes eight zero, one absent.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Being that we are under suspension of the rules, we have a young man in our council chambers this evening by the name of Jose Rangel. He is a student at the Hammond Academy of Science and Technology. He received an invitation, and I'm going to read it to you. "In honor of your academic achievement and leadership ability, the Congressional Youth Leadership Council cordially invites you to participate in the Junior National Young Leaders Conference." In reading through some of the information that his mother gave me, it says, "As a junior national scholar, Jose will take an important step toward being recognized as a leader in his school and community. He will gain the kind of experience and perspective that will benefit him throughout his secondary education and beyond." I just wanted to congratulate Jose. I know that his parents are very proud of him. He is a resident of the fourth district, and I'm just thrilled for you. So if you would please stand. Thank you.
Congratulations, Jose.
Thank you.
Would you like to say anything, Jose? You come up to the mic.
I just want to say thank you for reading this. I was really surprised that I got this. I was just really happy that I'm going to this. I just want to say thank you.
Good job. Good luck.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinahosa.
Motion to go back into the regular order of business.
Second, there's a motion to go back to order of regular business by Councilman Hinahosa, second by Councilman Higgs. Roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski. Zalinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Enosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to nothing, one absent. Number eleven, new and unfinished business.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Just wanted to put it out there, for Preacher on Thursday at six o'clock at Freddie Steakhouse, they're having a memorial for him, so those who want to attend can do so. But they are having a memorial for the preacher.
Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is now closed. Number twelve, public expression. Do we have a list? Is there anybody here that hasn't signed the board that would like to speak tonight? Okay, our first guest is Gail Valetta, Seventy-six Thirty-one Golfway, Gold and Cash Stores.
It's Valetta.
Valetta.
Good evening, council members. I have lived in this city for all of my sixty-one years of my life. In my present home, I've been there for thirty-two years. On January fifth, my home was broken into while I was at work, and my husband was at work, and my son was at work. Among the items taken was my wedding ring and my husband's wedding ring over the thirty years, my grandmother's cross, my child's bracelets with their pictures, and a lot of things that were very memorable to me. I was shocked to find out that you can take items to these cash, gold to cash places, and they have no responsibility to report what they bring in to the police or to the authorities. I'd like to say getting a check from these people is a step in the right direction, but not totally. Florida law requires pictures of the items be taken and either given a detailed list to the police or have it available via computer to law enforcement. They also require that anyone who sells anything to these gold to cash stores provide a state or a federal ID at that time. They are also paid by check. If the city of Hammond would do this, this would spare people the pain that I've been going through. The police have been very good, but their hands are tied. They need help, and one of the ways to help them is to be able to not have places where these people can steal things and easily, easily get rid of them. Just take them in and get the money and go. Everything may have not been worth a lot of money, but to me, they were worth everything. They were my memories. And again, I would ask the council to follow the Florida law when it comes to these gold to cash places.
Really sorry for your loss, ma'am. George Stoya.
Yeah, I was intrigued with that issue that the last speaker just spoke about and passed it. Does this council have the authority to pass that? That seems like it might be preempted by state law. I mean, I don't know. We've got the attorney here. I mean, it seems like it runs afoul of, especially if you're forced to pay with a check. I don't know. I mean, what about money? It's legal tender. I don't know that you can restrict that, but it just seems preempted by state law. I don't know if the city can do it. I would hope the city, again, I'm just curious. I'm not accusing anybody of anything. I'm just saying, clarification would be nice. Thank you.
Alvin Cheeks.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to invite, first of all, I'd like to invite the Hammond City Council out to the second annual chess tournament for the mayor. And you guys, you guys always pitch in and help, so I would hope this year that you guys jump in. I know the economy's tight, but we've had some real talented kids. Couple of the kids even got their pilot's license, couple of them got their helicopter license, so they're moving really forward, so I would just hope that the council this year really helps them out. Secondly, I want to jump in on the issue of things being pondered. If you go into a pawn shop, they take your ID. I just think that if you go in, I've been to scrap dealers, they don't say what the item is, so even if you get a check, you don't know which particular item it is. So I would hope that they keep that in mind and find a way to arbitrarily do that. And then the second thing is in regards to the jobs program. I was wondering, is there going to be a clause in there where Hammond works first? I got a union card, and the first person that's sitting at the hall gets to go to a job site. So I'd be curious to see how they're going to mandate these construction companies to ensure that Hammond residents and minorities and women and people with disabilities have the opportunity to work on these jobs too. I didn't see anything in the document that entail that. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Excuse me, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Before we adjourn, just for clarification, I'd like to ask Attorney Cantar to come to the podium. I do believe that the pawnbrokers and scrap yards and such do require, they are required to get a photo ID of the person that they are taking the items from.
Councilwoman, just make a motion to go back to the regular order of business.
Move to go back to regular order of business.
Second, there's a motion to go back to regular order of business. First by Councilwoman Vines, second by Councilman Higgs. Roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski. Zalinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Enosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero, one absent.
Councilwoman Vines, I'm trying to pull it up on my iPad quickly. Prior to this ordinance, there was an ordinance which required the cash for gold to abide by the exact same rules that Hammond requires for pawn shops. And pawn shops, there we go, pawnbrokers. Pawn, let's see, junk shop. Cash for gold places have to follow the exact same laws as pawn shops. And pawn shops are already required to ask for a photo ID, and they are supposed to also keep a list of all items that come in. The problem is when you're dealing with somebody who's not reputable, they're not going to follow the ordinances. So what the cash for gold restriction does allow for us to do is they are no longer able to pay cash for gold, because as you know, gold is fungible. Once melted down, it becomes indistinguishable from any other object of gold, and cash, of course, is untraceable. So it's one more step in making it more difficult. If they have to issue a check to somebody, that somebody has to have sufficient identification in order to cash that check. Even at a currency exchange, they do ask for ID. So this will make it a little bit more stringent. My plan is also, once I get the copy of this ordinance, I intend to send it to the Lake County Sheriff and all the police departments and the town councils and city councils and the rest of Lake County, because what I don't want to happen is for Hammond to have this restriction, and then they just run across the street to the pawn shop in Highland, or the cash for gold in Munster where the Quiznos used to be. So what I want to do is I want to get this across the entire county to make it a little bit more difficult for people to victimize innocent people for a few dollars.
Addressing the question of the resident, however, the pawn shops and cash for gold are required, when they take merchandise in, to take a photo ID and register the items that they're taking in, correct?
That is correct. Now, they are not required to photograph the items, but that's not a bad idea, and it is something that a council could always consider. But they are required to get information from the person that comes in.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Since we went back to regular order of business, we passed that ordinance for this cash for gold. Do we want to bring that back out now and make these changes to that ordinance that they have to take pictures of their stuff and itemize it that way, since we brought that up tonight?
Are you going to make that in the form of a motion?
Well, I mean, I'm throwing that out for the sponsor of the ordinance. Maybe that's something she would consider. I mean, I'd be in favor of that. And just since we passed it tonight, why don't we just do it all at once?
Well, let me tell you what the ordinance says. What we have for pawn dealers and for cash for gold is found in section one-one-eight point two-two of the Hammond Municipal Code. That says, "Any person licensed under any provision of the ordinance for the city for the purposes of carrying on the business of pawnbroker or cash for gold or scrap metal broker shall keep a correct list and description in a book or computer program in English for that purpose of every article, thing, item, valuable piece of jewelry pledged, deposited, or sold, whether for an advance of money, cash, sale, or trade. Pawnbrokers, cash for gold, and scrap metal brokers shall ask for, verify, and copy photographic identification, date, place, and time of transaction, and this list and photographic identification shall be made available to the Hammond Police Department or other law enforcement officials when requested." And then it also says, "Every pawnbroker, cash for gold, or scrap metal purchaser shall at the time of the loan, sale, or trade, deliver to the person making the sale, owner, trade, with the business a written receipt showing the date, time, and item which is the basis for the transaction." And it says, of course, anybody violating this will have their license revoked. So if you wanted to add to the list of what they need to do, it says for purpose of every article, thing, valuable place, shall, the description, we can also have a photograph. I could always suit for another ordinance if you don't want to add it to this one.
Not only that, Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
A list of those names should be submitted to the police department, so that way you can detect whether or not they're going from one pawnbroker to the next one.
Yeah, it does say, "And this list shall be made available to the Hammond Police Department." I don't know if they just want it when they show up, or if they want it monthly. I don't know.
We should stipulate monthly. I think so.
Yeah, but that's in section one-one-eight point two-two.
I'm not the sponsor, but I will amend in at the end of the section of that ordinance that the report of all items or all individuals that are selling items to cash for gold be sent to the police department.
I think before we amend it, we need a motion to reconsider the ordinance.
Okay, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I'd like to return to the regular order of business.
We already there, just. We're already there.
Yeah.
We sent to reconsider.
Okay, I'd like to reconsider then. I'm looking for it.
Twelve thirteen.
Thank you very much. So move.
Second. It's been first by Councilwoman Vines, second by Councilman Higgs. To, we amending twelve thirteen?
Yeah, just amending in.
Amending reconsider twelve thirteen. Call for the roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski. Zalinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Enosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Reconsideration passes eight zero.
Alrighty, so am I correct in understanding, Attorney Cantar, that there is not currently a requirement to photograph the items that are brought in?
That is correct. One-one-eight point two-two does require a description, and it does require a photocopy of the person's identification, but it does not require the items themselves be photographed, which, like as the speaker said, might be helpful, at least identifying an item if it's something unique. You know, if it's just a coin, then maybe you wouldn't, but...
Okay. Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I'd like to amend in a stipulation that the cash for gold businesses, scrap dealers, and pawnbrokers photograph the items that they take in.
There's amendment on the floor for twelve thirteen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Clerk, why are you raising your hand?
Mr. Chairman, where do I place that amendment at?
At the end. End of twelve thirteen.
Mr. Chairman. I realize that, but in twelve thirteen, there's section A, D, and C. Where would the council like that amendment?
D.
What section?
D. We'll make a D.
Oh, D like a dog?
D, yeah. No D. Yeah, D is dog.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Maybe in a way, I'm sorry I brought that up. We passed this ordinance tonight. I would think that maybe that the city attorney and Councilwoman Vines can come up with something, and all we'll do is just make an amendment and add it to this ordinance maybe next week then. Instead of just trying to piecemeal it here, and nobody knows what's going on. You know, along with the photograph, I mean, if they're bringing in a wedding ring, most wedding rings have dates in them and initials, at least mine does. So, I mean, you know, if they have that information with a picture, and they need to scrutinize it to make sure there's no date inside or initial and stuff of that nature. When they bring in watches, I know my watch is, when they were given to me, they had my name and date that I received it, so maybe we need to do that too in that respect. And that way, just to give some information to the councilwoman and to the city attorney, and we can add that information in there along with the picture. Granted, it's going to make more business for the pawn shops, but I think what's going to happen is... the pawn shops, but I, I think what's going to happen is it might be putting the pawn shops out of business in Hammond, because nobody's going to come here anymore to try and get their money.
Very good point, Councilman Markovich.
Mr. President, if you just want to pass the check for gold as written, I promise you I can get in, a, a modification of one-one-eight point two-oh on the agenda for the very next meeting.
Well, we passed... Well, twelve thirteen's been passed.
Correct, no, no, but I'm just saying, if, you're trying to mod, modify it now, if you just want to leave it as it was.
We'll just leave it as it was.
I can write up a fresh one to modify one-one-eight.
Okay, that'll work.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I rescind my motion.
I second, rescind my second.
Councilwoman Vines first, uh, Councilman Higgs second to rescind the ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's been rescinded. Motion to adjourn.
So move, Mr. President.
Second.
Alls in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting. Adjourn.